Can you begin everyone? Welcome to our meeting. Our convening order is decided. Roll call please Barbara. He's here, right. Dr. Corbin up here. Dr. Mr. Brown. Dr. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Matt Kara.
Here.
Mrs. Moreland.
Here.
Mrs. Kowdick.
Here.
Mr. Palmer. Mrs. Rachel.
Here.
Shannon. Shannon Chang.
Here.
Hello. Diane Hodgson. Thank you. Barbara's stadium is filling in tonight for Jim Davis. So thank you Barbara. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Lord of the best science and of the republic for justice. One nation under God, in the gospel with glory and justice for all.
Barbara please read and introduce the open court of peace law statement.
Whereas the open public meeting act and JSA ten point four will support education to meet and closing to discuss the matter. We have therefore resolved the unlawful attempt of supported education. The adjournments in closing session to discuss the matter of your compliance by federal laws. We call it a matter of the use of information within the right to receive government funding. We chair only disclosure of which constitutes non-warranted invasion of individual privacy. A collective bargaining agreement and a negotiation will be facilitated in matter involving purchase, use, or requisition of real property, public points, protection of public property and safety and property equal to investigations of possible violation or violations of law pending or inches capable of discussion or contact negotiations in dealing matters of attorney, pardon, privilege.
Thank you Barbara. Okay, we'll listen to our high school students now. Thank you Shannon.
Well, thank you. And I'll be here in a few minutes. But regarding sports, on October thirteenth, Montpelot girls varsity volleyball moved on to the Morris Town finals, active three Morris Town semifinals. The Mustangs won the match twenty-five to nine, twenty-two five, a twenty-five to eighteen. The girls varsity tennis team has had incredible three weeks so far. On October fourteenth, the girls with title of state exceptional champions active in Ramapo. Then on October seventeenth, the tennis team traveled to Markstir County Park and won the NJSI Group Three Tennis Title. Match against Morris Town in semifinals, the Mustangs won four to one. Then in the finals, match against previously other team Princeton, the girls won four to one again, becoming the two thousand thirteen Group Three Champions. And on October twentieth, the team traveled to New Brunswick for quarterfinals of the tournament of champions, where they beat Glen Ridge five to zero. They face Happy Field in semifinals tomorrow on October twenty-second. The girls varsity suffered recently improved their record to nine to five to two and goals this season to thirty-nine, which is the most weighted goals since nineteen ninety-eight. On the club front, on October thirteenth, Key Club participated in Fall Rally Convention, where over three thousand Key Club members gathered at six blocks to honor that Key Club president and members of the board. The Key Club is also participating in trick-or-treat for human stuff this year, where members asked for donations to provide tennis vaccines to expecting mothers in foreign countries. On October fourteenth, Mapple High School's School of Rock held a very successful concert in the school library during lunch. And marching band traveled through Ruckers on October nineteenth for the US Men's New Jersey State Championships, where they were in fourth place and won the capturing best effect. For our school, last week from October fourteenth through eighteenth, MTHS held their annual Fall Sphere Week. Each day had a different theme, some of which included pajama day, pajama day, Mapple Day. One of the most noble days was create daddy day, where all students were asked to wear white, white, and blue. Then at lunch and after school, our student activities council set up a card installation, where students were able to make cards for troops overseas and over seventy-five cards were made. On Thursday, October seventeenth, MTHS held their annual homecoming dance. The dance is held in high school cafeteria with DJ and photo booth. Members of SAC State after school that day helped decorate the cafeteria and the dance did not have success with record attendance. For government in the future, on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, beginning at seven PM, Montpelot Township High School will hold an open house event entitled Discover MTHS. The open house event will be preceded by a fifteen-minute child break, a parent information program beginning at six o'clock PM hosted by Lizar. All the evenings program will take place at high school though. Students in grades eight, six through eight are invited to experience all the opportunities that are bound to MTHS and the goal is to provide families with exposure to many programs that exist at high school.
Thank you so much Shannon.
That's a very thorough report. Anybody have any questions, superintendent?
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Good evening everyone. I would like to also congratulate our girls varsity tennis team today here at the high school. The tennis team took a walk, if you will, throughout the high school while their peers, all of their fellow students laughed and cheered for them. I was able to come over and watch that with Andrea Stavaji and Dr. Gaby Shorter. And it was wonderful and I want to thank Ms. Sanford, our principal, for doing that today. It was Mr. Pivatello. It was really a great event as the girls continue with the competition tomorrow. And we certainly wish them all the success. I'm going to take the liberty of moving my calendar discussion report to later on in the program so that we can move forward with our first presentation this evening, which is the Montpelot Township High School Science Research Program. I know Ms. Sanford's here, our high school principal, and Dr. Sandra Schwartz, who is our supervisor of math, science, and business, who both support this wonderful program. And this program began a year ago September, September two thousand twelve, with twelve sophomores beginning the program. And we're very pleased that the program continues to keep the interest of our last year sophomores, who are now juniors. And now we have twenty additional students, twenty sophomores in the program, giving us thirty-one total students. And with us this evening is Dr. Doreen Sarachi and Rachel Salazar, our two instructors for our science research program. And I wanted to thank them for their continued enthusiasm, dedication. I was here to see the program just a few days ago. And again, as always, I was incredibly impressed with our students that many of those students are with us in the audience tonight. But I'd like to introduce Doreen and Rachel to begin the presentation.
Good evening. Oh, can you hear me?
No, we're very close.
About now. Thank you Dr. Pudin, thank you Dr. Corey Millenbauer, thank you so much for having us. We'd like to thank you for having a program in our schools for the second year and I think we've been doing a great job. You can see that our group has blossomed, we have many more students, most of the classes here tonight, so that's exciting. Just quickly, I just want to tell you we're excited to share our successes and to show you how our students are going to explain what's been going on in our course this year. Our juniors have grown so much, we're very proud of them. They have an active role in the class, being role models, being supporters of our sophomores and providing advice to sophomores as well. Very easy to see your sophomores blue. They're already showing signs of just taking huge steps and huge strides now. I'd also just like to publicly thank our parents there, most of them are there as well. They've been very supportive and they're very important in being a support group to make sure our students stay motivated and encouraged, so let's thank you. So, Doreen.
I just wanted to thank you for having us again. We thought you'd like to hear about what some of our juniors are doing now. We talked last year as they began the program and we have the sophomores to talk about their impressions of the program so far. So we'll leave it to them so that they can tell you what they're doing. Thank you. So, these are our sophomores, three of our sophomores. They all voted on Colvin Speed, so they are representing sophomores. We've got Stacy Wang and Kelvin and Natasha.
Hi, my name is Holland. So, being part of science research, special opportunity, thanks for that, taken by motivated students, the last initial scientific process and hours. So, and this hires motivation and interest. And the freedom to expand and learn in our own way without restrictions and special guidelines really helps us learn what we want to learn in a world where science is really important. And this is why this class is a worthwhile thing. This class is also a hopeful because of our juniors. They also taking this path and this year they've been a huge help. Not only this is very scary, but it's so. And it's meaningful to us. They've been helping us with research, hard research, what does this class mean? And this class really just really to expand your own knowledge about what we're interested in. And you know, eventually when they become juniors and become juniors will help them help the sophomore part too.
Thank you.
My name is Natasha Dusaja and I'm also a sophomore in the science research class. And one of the best things about the science research program is the diversity that you'll find within the different topics in the class itself. Specifically in our grade as sophomores, we research different topics over the summer in order to get a basic understanding of what it was that we would be interested in during our time researching in the class and see what we would think would be a good possible topic for us. And over the process, we've come up with a large range of topics from digital image analysis and using computers in order to help find out scientific things, to the study of swine mold and dark matter and using nanoparticles in different ways. So because this program allows us to have such a wide outlook into our own interests in the field of science, it's a great help in order to learn more about the science that we're interested in. And this program allows us to research what we truly think is most interesting in our own mind.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy Wang and like Kelvin and Natasha, I'm one of the sophomores in the science research program. So after finding a topic, well, obviously you have to do a lot of research, but after that, the most important and possibly most difficult thing to do is find a mentor. Having a mentor is so beneficial because he or she will be able to guide you through the research process and teach you valuable lessons. Depending on your topic, this mentor could also provide you with the environment and tools needed to conduct the experiment and answer your research question. It's really difficult to find a mentor because most of the scientists usually get post-grad students to help them out. So for a high school student, that's a pretty big jump. Plus it's difficult to find a mentor that researches the same topic and works somewhat locally. We have to constantly reach out and contact researchers. I mean, for now, scientists are going to come and see this out. Although hopefully in the future, this program gets really deeply well, but not for now. And most of us don't have super advanced knowledge on our topics. All we really have is the passion to learn something new, something different. But sometimes that's enough. So now we'll each individually explain our separate topics, starting with Helen.
Thank you.
My passion is physics and my big one is dark matter research.
Just get a little closer to the microphone, please. Thank you.
So my specific research is on dark matter. And well, dark matter is a popular thing, particle in the universe to explain large, large, inner, yeah, to explain things in the universe that haven't been explained before. There's a standard model which is probably most successful, it's a leading topic in history. And well, and this is in gun explaining universe. So there'd be fluttered gaps in the model. And well, dark matter research is just one way to try to use that model.
My topic is the study of digital imaging analysis and uses in different scientific processes. And what digital image analysis does is allow scientists to take pictures of different things and analyze them using a computer. So the computer will be able to tell them what kind of substance they're looking at, how much of a substance they're looking at, and tell you how many different kinds of substances are in a separate picture. I am lucky to have found a mentor already due to family connections. And my mentor works in Rutgers as he's a post-grad student. And in his lab, the team of researchers that he is working with uses digital imaging analysis to study the different uses of drugs on individual cancer patients and how those different therapies work per each individual. Now, what I would be doing in working with them in their lab, since I'm obviously not skilled enough for any of like the hardcore work like they do, is I would be working on taking the different pictures of the different slides through the microscopes and running them through the computer and also taking the different lenses that they use and working to make them a little better and see how you can make the different lenses on the cameras work better so that the computer software is able to recognize the different images and thus calculate the cancer cells in order to view treatments for each individual cancer patient and see how these affect each person individually so that they all have a better chance at surviving.
I'm going to first give some background and then go into my topic. I first chose to do this program because I saw it as a great opportunity to do some advanced learning on a topic that I was really interested in. I went to the symposium last year, talked to some of the current juniors, and I found that a lot of my friends were also interested, so that's a good thing. Of course, the first thing I had to do was decide on a topic or an idea for research, which was hard. My topics ranged from studying the capture of new ones to preventing mosquito bites, but I knew that I wanted to study business. Luckily, I was able to find a mentor, Dr. Tenu, who works at the Fermilab National Accelerator Laboratory. Fermilab is actually the second largest accelerator in the world, right after the European Organization for Nuclear Research, known more commonly as CERN, C-E-R-N, which is located in Switzerland. In particle accelerators like Fermilab, physicists collide protons with protons and other particles in the hopes of capturing data for significant events that occur. When you collide, for example, two protons, different particles will pop out. It's a hard concept to really grasp, but protons are made up of other things. But physicists don't know exactly how to separate them yet. So to study these separate things, they collide the protons and see what pops out. The way that my mentor described it to me was with cave and playing with cars. They don't know how to take it apart, but they want to study what it's made out. So they crash the cars into each other and each time they crash it into each other, different parts pop out differently. And then they study those parts, which is similar to how protons would be studied. Over the summer, I was able to go to Chicago and visit Fermilab and see Dr. Liu. In this trip, I learned more about Dr. Liu's research, which is on supercomputing for the High Luminosity Large Hadron Collider, which is a proposed upgrade to the current Large Hadron Collider at CERN Switzerland. The High Luminosity Large Hadron Collider would have a higher luminosity as well as more data to collect. However, the data processor itself is not advanced enough to really retrieve and analyze all of that data at a fast enough rate. So Dr. Liu and his team are finding new ways to build a supercomputer that would be able to handle all of that data and that would be able to handle all of that data through more advanced 3D technology. With that supercomputer, scientists will be able to study particle collisions much more efficiently and much more in detail. I'm actually working on the opportunity to be able to intern at Fermilab next summer for two months with Dr. Liu and I'm really excited. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's so much pleasure what high school students can do. So now our juniors are telling you a little bit about what they do for the summer. Two of the, two of the three of them have been at your lab. So now, we'll have to get Dave and Sam to go on.
Hi, I don't know if you guys remember me, but Noah and I presented last year at the Science Symposium. And I think it's really cool to see that same excitement that I had last year in these sophomores. And I'm, one reason why I'm really looking forward to this year is because you have such a different class dynamic than you had last year. Because last year we had twelve kids in the class, so some days it's pretty quiet and it's really nice on the post-class, but it's also really small. And this year we have a work ready kids in the class, so it's really exciting because everyone's collaborating and helping each other out and giving suggestions. So it's really, really exciting to have a kind of new dynamic and new kids to be working with. And I'm also really excited just because I've made such progress from last year. So I remember standing up in front of you guys last year and I was really nervous to speak in front of all you guys and this year I'm much more comfortable in public speaking. But I'm also much more comfortable with my topic because last year when I stood in front of you guys, I wasn't really sure what I was doing. I was really excited about my topic in the class, but when I read through papers, I, I wasn't really sure what I was reading, I didn't know what it meant. But this year when I read through papers, it's easy to me, I understand everything that I'm saying. And it's also really exciting because I'm actually, last summer I ran experiments very similar to the papers I was reading. So I wasn't just reading papers and understanding them, I was also applying mathematics. So over the summer, I interned at Penn State for four weeks. I worked nine-to-five in the food science lab with Dr. Naval. And I was just really excited because every day I learned something new. Every day I was doing something different. And I really, was really appreciative because Dr. Naval spent almost the whole day with me. And I loved to run a bunch of different experiments. But mostly what I was doing, I was working with E. coli and Listeria inocula, and those are two different types of bacteria. They're both non-hapagenic, so they wouldn't make me sick or anything like that. But what I was studying with them is Dr. Naval noticed that the long-rooted incubate bacteria, Listeria inoculose, they undergo this change where the cells shrink down into little circles and they almost go into this hibernation mode where they shut down all their processes. So they shut down protein synthesis, they shut down cell wall synthesis. So nothing's really happening in the cell, they're just kind of hibernating. And then the reason, they think that the reason that the cells go into this kind of hibernation mode is because there's a lack of nutrients in their environment. And then the really interesting part is that when nutrients are put back into the environment, the cells germinate and they grow back to their full size and they restart up all these processes. So they start making proteins again, they start making their cell wall again, everything starts up again. And this, this kind of hibernation mode is really interesting because scientists don't know much about it. They don't know why cells go into hibernation, they're not really sure what triggers it. So what I was doing this summer is kind of working with Dr. Naval, looking at that hibernation state. And what I was mostly researching was when cells are in this hibernation state, they're extremely resistant to all different kinds of stresses. There is this temperature stress, pH stress, pressure stress, all these kinds of things. But the cells had never been tested with oxidative stress before. So what I did is I tested these cells with hydrogen peroxide to see if they would be more resistant in that hibernation state and their germination state. And it was really interesting because our results showed that in the hibernation state, the cells were more resistant to hydrogen peroxide. And scientists, again, I'm not really sure why that is, but Dr. Naval and his PhDs could be trying to be worried about. And I'm hoping that I'll be able to intern there again this summer, so I hope we have a work. And then, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam. Topic that I study is ACC or Justice of the Civil System. This is a disorder where the axons, I think, the right hemisphere, the left hemisphere of the brain, they fell apart. So they have people with this disorder have difficulty with internal and external transfer. Some other difficulties that people in ACC encounter is they have difficulty understanding second language, such as like sarcasm or humor. They have difficulties with motor skills that cross the baseline and they're challenged socially. So over the summer, I went to the Travis Research Institute in Pasadena, California. I studied under Dr. Warren Brown, who is the main, you know, prominent figure in ACC research. And specifically under my mentor Amanda Bannos, who is a, she's a research advisor in that. While there, I watched her administer tests such as the TAT and numbers convincing test. TAT is a test where they show cards and these cards are supposed to stir up negative emotions. And so the goal of these is to have anyone that takes a test tell a complete and full story. And so while she administered to a patient with a right tennis cractomy, that's when they were removed from part of the right hemisphere of the brain, due to seizures that she had with child. So after analyzing the effects of her, we found that she had difficulty telling a complete story without beginning middle M and N and also did not use the proper negative emotion words in the right place, which is very similar to what I have with ACC. So the experiment that I'm going to be, going to go with your own, for help, is I fully administer a numbers convincing test similar to what she administered when I was there. And then to, and also test on controlation so I can see the difficulty in the, in the research.
Thank you.
Hi, just once again, hi, just once again, thank you for having us and letting us speak. So last year, I was able to, after a lot of failed emails and professors telling me that I'm not able to research with them, finally, Dr. Myers, Dr. Catherine Myers, who works at the VA studying BI's effect on PTSD. And so naturally, I didn't want to do it just because of the sheer amount of academics. But eventually I figured out that I love this field that I'm researching and BI is behavioral inhibition, veterans administration, indie storage, and studying the effects of PTSD, which is post-traumatic stress disorder. So because I don't have the experience of these researchers in this lab and they're studying people, veterans who really have PTSD, so I am on as the programmer, which is funny because I had no programming experience, but Dr. Myers has helped me through that. She's a really great mentor. And every Monday I go there and get to see them. I have this journal club, which is basically them going over journal articles, which we've been reading in class. I've been reading on my own and some other people in my field have been reading also. And just a little day to day on the class. We have not only been able to research what in our fields, but we've also been able to take on a leadership role because as juniors, we've been able to go around to the sophomores and ask them what they're doing. So a game I like to play is pretend that I'm a four-year-old and just keep on asking why. And I'll go up to one of the sophomores and ask them about their topic and ask them about a research paper they've read and say why, and why, and why. And I, it's really amazing because I'll be able to go over to Nick and hear about PTSD and then I'll be able to go to Shaw, who sits right next to me, and hear about physics. And then I'll be able to go across the room to Alex and learn about sharks. And I just get to hear about all these different topics and I've been able to take on a leadership role as well. So I look forward to continuing this. Also, just as an announcement, this is way in advance, but our symposium is going to be the first Monday in June, I believe that's June second. So if any of you guys want to write down right now, anyone in the audience, we're hoping for a larger attendance this year and it's going to be great. There'll be food also, so.
Well, thank you for the student, to the students who came up to share your experiences both in sophomore year and now in junior year. This, this, the board loves this program. It's just so wonderful to see your excitement and your passion and, and opportunity to explore something. and an opportunity to explore something that's not prescribed by our curriculum or by any particular teacher. You can just explore the crevices of your mind, and it's just, it's so wonderful. I don't know if any of you saw 60 Minutes this last Sunday, but they had a 14-year-old who is working on a test, an early detection test for pancreatic cancer, which is one of the most deadliest forms of cancer. He found a mentor, like you guys found mentors, and he did work, he's now doing work at Hopkins, I believe. He might have moved someplace else. But while I was watching that, I thought of all of you, and, you know, maybe among our midst, we have a Nobel Prize winner, and it wouldn't surprise me. So thank you so much for sharing.
Perhaps we can just ask our science research students to stand up? I know many of you are in the audience tonight.
Can I ask a question of either of the, either of the two teachers? Have all the juniors been able to find mentors?
Out of about 10 juniors, we have, I believe right now, five or six have mentors. And four or five are still, are still serious.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions, Tom and Warren? I did have another question, but I dropped it off. Maybe one of you can work on that one. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I look forward to the symposium. Oh, I know what my question was, I'm sorry. I, and you have to answer it now. But I would be interested to know, and maybe this can happen at the symposium as, you know, we move around and talk to the students, I would be interested to know particularly from the juniors who are now very deep in their work, how the topic they're working on now evolved from what they thought originally their topic would be. So I'd be interested to know that at that time in June.
That's a great suggestion, we'll make sure to pay.
Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. What we're going to do now is introduce Dr. Casey Shorter, who's going to be doing the required annual report, student performance accomplishments for 2013. So the Board of Education perhaps would move to receive the audience for this presentation, it'll be a PowerPoint.
And the students are welcome to stay, but you don't have to. They know you have work to do.
It's okay, it's okay.
So it was exciting to see, so it kind of lends in, it was a nice segue to talking a little bit about our performance for 2012, 2013 school year. It's about a dozen slides or so that I'm going to run through, I know a lot of you have that from the handouts when you walked in. The first three slides are going to focus on the NJAS scores, three through 11, for this past year. And then the remaining eight or nine slides are going to talk about different areas of performance that our students excelled in, or some highlights that we picked to summarize some of the things that our students worked on. It's difficult to see, but this is just a quick snapshot of our graph of our NJAS performance in Language Arts Literacy. Compared to the DFG, which is the District Factor Group, that is something that the state, I guess categorizes districts in based on socioeconomic status. Some of you may recall that there's actually two reports the state has been releasing the last year or so. One is the NJAS Performance Report, and the other one is the School Performance Report that I know Dr. Freed introduced to you, all of you, last spring. For that, they're no longer using District Factor Group or DFG as a category. But as this is, as we're running into the last year of NJAS, because next year, it's going to be the PARK Assessment, which is an all-online test based on the Core Content Standards. For whatever reason, they continue to use DFG for the NJAS interpretation for last year. So as you can see by our graph, our scores compared to districts like ours based on our district factor group, and of course, the performance degree, which is a state average. In most of those categories, in Language Arts, in most of the grade levels, we outperformed our district factor group, which are districts most like ours if you base it off of a number of different factors related to socioeconomic status. And these scores have been relatively consistent over the past three years. Our performance has been pretty consistent, where we do exceed many of our peers in each grade level in this area. Moving on to mathematics, very similar results. As you can see, we're the blue part of the bar graph. And again, we outperform in many grade levels districts similar to ours, as well as across the board compared to state averages. And finally, pertaining to the NJAS, a little bit difficult to see, but I broke it down by grade level here in the numerical format. And you can see in all the grade levels, except three areas, we outperformed our district factor group like schools. And of course, significantly outperformed the state averages across the board in the NJAS. Some of you may or may not be familiar with the Common Core, which is a nationally adopted standards for different subject areas. This administration of the NJAS MAP was the first year that the test was aligned with the Core Content Standards. And I thought we did quite well, at least in three through five. It was not six through eight. So three through five, with the new standards being implemented for NJAS, I thought we did quite well, being that the standards were new for us and we're still implementing that. Moving from the NJAS to different performance areas. Here's a snapshot of our ACT scores compared to the state and then of course, the nation. We don't have the data compared to other DFG schools, other district factor schools. So as you can see there, our students in Montville Township compare quite nicely to the state and national scores on the ACTs. Also, a test that some of you are probably more familiar with is the SAT scores, or SAT test. And again, our score is very similar to last year. We again outperform the state and national averages across the board in those areas. And if you bear with me, I'll share with you a little bit about what each one of these categories means and what they qualify for. As you can see, there are AP Scholars, we have 30 students qualify for that. And AP Scholars are granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. So we have 30 of those, we have 14 AP Scholar with honors. And this is defined as students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. Our largest number of students fell on the AP Scholar with distinction. These students average a score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. And then finally, National AP Scholars in this category. This is granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. So that's quite a feat to fall in any one of these categories. So congratulations to our students in that area. I talked a little bit about the end game, and AP courses typically fall towards the end of students' high school careers. And as you can see there, 8.5, nearly 90% of our students score three through five, which is considered passing for college credit. So nearly 90% of our students who participate are earning college credit in our AP program. So we'll have to see that. And I broke it down a little bit by scores of five, four, and three on the exam, that's, you know, one to five in scoring. But I can see most of our students scored in the four range, with a fair amount of students scoring a perfect score, which is five. Some other student accomplishments, our forensic team ranked second in New Jersey. We had 40 students who competed in the DECA Nationals, and our marching band placed third in New Jersey and fifth in the nation in the competition. So those are nice to celebrate. Also, our National Merit data, this is over the last two years. We've had eight National Merit finalists, eight semifinalists, and 34 commended students. And to touch upon some of our athletic accomplishments, just to summarize, there are too many to list. We had two state sectional finalists last year, girls tennis and bowling. Five conference champions, as you can see there, girls and boys tennis rounding that out, and both baseball, girls, broads. We had 106 athletes that received all-conference recognition. 34 athletes received all-county recognition. Seven athletes received all-state, which is quite an accomplishment. And 12 individual school records were set by our athletes. Those are pretty impressive numbers. And as we talked already about the end game, 96% of our students attend college, 89% of them four-year schools, with 7% attending two-year schools. And then a combination of different avenues rounds out that percentage of 4%. So those are pretty impressive numbers, I think, you know, our district is positioned in a good place, and we're continually moving to improve those. And here, just the list of some of the universities that our students have gotten accepted to. Again, I took that over a three-year span. The list is too long, the list on a PowerPoint slide, I tried to highlight some of the most competitive colleges that our kids have gotten into. And that's part of the present list there. So that end game to start with is really being realized when it comes to college expenses. Okay, that's the snapshot of our academic and student performance for 2012, 2013. If you have any questions? Yes?
Can you talk a little bit about slide number four? Three or four, I'm sorry, two or four, where it shows the MAP grades. I'm looking at fifth down to sixth.
Okay.
I just wondered if you could...
That one?
Yeah. Can you speak a little bit about the drop that you see from fifth to sixth, and if that's a trend, or can you...
Yeah, now, last year, when you looked at this chart, the red was on the fifth grade. So it's more, it's more consistent with the cohort. Sometimes you get cohort students that come through, and sometimes score a little bit lower as they move through. So last year's sixth grade was in the green, and last year's fifth grade was in the red. So this fifth grade group from the year before was tested this past spring in sixth grade, and it scored 82.2. But that 82.2 is higher, that cohort of kids did improve from their grade five score, which was still in the red, with that one year of improvement, that same cohort of kids showed a little bit of improvement. I think it was two or three percentage points, not a major, you know, statistical advantage. But, you know, I took note of that when I saw the sixth grade was in the green last year and they outperformed their DFG. And then when this group tested, they dropped, so I said, well, let's look at that sixth grade group, how they did last year in fifth grade. And it was the same thing, that was one of the red areas on last year's performance report when I presented. But that cohort of fifth graders, which were the sixth graders, also scored in the red, but they showed some improvement, so that was a good sign. All right, so it doesn't indicate a trend in any grade level? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Any others in the board, any questions? Anyone else?
I also, every year at this time when we see the list of colleges, because ultimately, the end game is their killing getting into colleges, and every year we say the same thing, which is that we're so fortunate that in Montville, our children get into the schools they're looking to get into. And that's really what it's all about. But when you also see a list of colleges such as these, and I happen to believe that Stanford was also a college that's not listed here, that one of our students got into for the first time in a long time, we had a student get into Stanford. This is representative of many of the Ivy League schools, as well as, I can tell, Brown. Now, these are some incredible institutions. On whatever level it is, you know, we should all be proud and take a step back and realize what an excellent education our students are getting this is.
Thank you, Hannah. Okay, I guess we'll move on to the superintendent's report calendar discussion.
Yes, thank you. Casey, thank you. Just one other comment before we leave the academic presentation from the science research and the school report part. You know, I think as Casey pointed out, you know, while we're very pleased and happy to report these kinds of scores, our community has heard me talk a great deal about the kind of learning that kind of transcends just getting the right answer. The Common Core standards and the new assessments coming to us, as difficult as this transition for our school district and every school district is going to be to move to these new kinds of learning and understanding and assessments, points us in that direction. Because those new assessments call for greater, deeper understanding of the content. As Dr. Tracy Severance, who's the state's chief academic officer, and you can have many different feelings about the things that she says when you're listening to her in person. But one of the things that she talks about is that our learning has to go beyond what you can actually just kind of find on your iPod, or your iPhone, I should say, or on your computer, that the understanding has to go deeper. So I think that we see that through a program such as science research, where the things our students are talking about wouldn't be something you could just look up and find on a computer. The understanding, the research, and the discovery goes beyond that. So as we put all of this together, I think that we're really preparing well for the future. Okay, moving into the here and now and the school calendar. So this evening, I'm not yet prepared to bring the recommendation before the board about the school calendar. We had some questions between the time we had our calendar, our large comprehensive calendar committee helped create our two-year calendar, to last board meeting with this discussion. I then received some additional questions, mostly around Columbus Day, and looking for possible ways that the Columbus Day holiday can be restored. So I am going to pass out the draft of the calendar to the board. I apologize, I didn't bring copies for the audience. But I'm giving this draft back to the board and opening up for further discussion, if the board would like to engage in any, and we'll start with the 2014, 15 school calendar.
The only comment I would make about the 14, 15 calendar is the children get out of school early that year, early in June, and that's a good thing. Although I find it ironic now that we're installing air conditioning. But that's a good thing, and what I notice is that this calendar is a bare-bones calendar in terms of holidays, which is with me.
Any other comments from the board?
I'm kind of in agreement with the fact that I think that Columbus Day should be restated. To go an entire month for these kids without a day off, I feel that they need a little break. So, I mean, that's just my opinion, I don't know whether...
I agree, I'd like to see if we could find a way to...
I agree. I'd like to see if we could find a way to reinstate the Columbus Day holiday for a variety of different reasons, not the least of which is the significance of it. Um, but I also think it's becoming an opportunity for families to have that little bit of a break, um, on that weekend. And following into that budget.
So, I'm certainly, you know, willing to hear suggestions from the board, um, in terms of how the calendar can be looked at by being able to, um, um, take that day, if the board is so inclined. The only solution, um, that I think I've been able to come up with is to, in fact, extend the end of the school year. It's been fairly, um, well-accepted in this community to not hold graduation on either a Friday or a Monday. Right now, as you can see, graduation, the last day of school is Thursday, June eighteenth. If we were to, in fact, bring an additional day, it could potentially, uh, happen if we would move graduation to Tuesday, June twenty-third. In fact, that would restore three days in the calendar. Friday the nineteenth, Monday the twenty-second, Tuesday the twenty-third. Not only could we bring Columbus Day into the picture, but we would actually have two additional days to, uh, to fit into the calendar. And they could, of course, come in a variety of places.
So what you're saying, Paul, is potentially the last day of school would be June...
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, so graduation...
Would be the twenty-third.
Oh, would be the twenty-third.
Yes, the last day of school and graduation. And that restores three days, if you will, to the calendar, um, which could be Columbus Day, Monday, October thirteenth. And then, of course, you could extend the President's Day weekend by two days. Uh, you could extend Memorial Day. There are a variety of opportunities, um, if, uh, if we did want to bring Columbus Day into the picture. I don't see any other place, but maybe a board member sees a place I've missed. I don't see another place to exchange Columbus Day, uh, for a, another holiday or another day.
Sure, Jackie, it's up to...
Now that we've opened up a whole different, uh, discussion, kind of stream, um, I've been a proponent of more days off in February for a long time, so, if there's not a lot of pushback about putting, um, actually graduating on the twenty-third, um, I wouldn't have any problem bringing Columbus Day back again in two days to February break. If you don't feel that you'll get pushback of ending on June twenty-third.
John, Frank, or Judith, I don't know who had to be the first.
Uh, I'd like to see if, could I see if you have more than four snow day, uh, more than four snow emergency days you're going to take away from the April break? I see that's because it's later in the year, but how about we do the Memorial Day, add days to that, and then first take away from that, so you don't have to take away from that full week. But if you do it in February, you still have a chance of having an emergency in February, and you have a potential to lose that April break. This way, it guarantees the April break, and we throw away the Memorial Day, and then if we have too many, then we take those two days back.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Frank, we're doing it in May. Just for the main purpose that most of your state testing is on the beginning of May, is that correct?
Yes.
So I mean, well, Brad?
The state testing is the first year of May, correct? So Andrea, when will our new park test be?
It'll be that twenty days, ninety percent after the school, into the school year. So they'll be testing the end of March, beginning of April that year, and then again, the middle, the end of May into June.
What's that?
It, yeah.
Still put that on that aspect, so I mean, at least then it won't affect a one testing cycle if you were doing it in May. I mean, although it may end up affecting the days to prepare for it in the May to June, it's not going to at least affect the April.
It doesn't really affect the testing cycle.
It takes one day.
It's an hour a day.
But it takes...
Right, but we have, it's a limited period of time, right, Andrea? Twenty-day period of time?
And they haven't told us if your break falls in there, if you get that extended, so it's twenty school days that you're in school, or it's a window, and if you're out certain days, you only have eighteen days. I'm assuming, but I could be wrong, that they would give you the full twenty days, and your days off that you have as a district would cap against you. So that would be a little more.
So John, so John and Frank, your suggestion is to add one more day to the... So the twenty-fifth and one more day, plus twenty-fifth plus the one wherever...
Well, I think he said you have two, right?
We have two additional.
Two additional, so if you have them there, you take them away from there before you take April. So I think a five-day break in May.
So tell me, what are you saying, Columbus Day?
He's saying, he's saying take...
Columbus Day plus the two?
Plus the two a day, he suggested.
Right, but if we don't have to give them that, then they could get a very long board waiting for finals. I don't know if I'd want my kids out of school that much in that. I'm just saying.
Paul, can I ask a question? Where is this process going? I know in terms of the actual decision-making process, you met with a committee, which was with a group of stakeholders?
That's correct.
And, and so then there are some other ideas that have come out. Are you going to go back to the committee, or are you going to make the decision yourself based upon board input this evening?
I don't think I would go back to the committee. I think eventually it's the board to make, you know, for me to make a recommendation to the board, and the board approve a calendar. So I was fine with the calendar as proposed through collaboration with the committee, but we did have some board members who were questioning, why not have Columbus Day if it's possible? That's why I brought it back to the board. If the board's perfectly satisfied with this calendar, I'm fine. If the board wants to include Columbus Day and make that adjustment, um, I'm just as fine.
Right, and here lies the issue that we had so many years, where when the board got involved, um, it became a mess, because, uh, or not a mess, and I'm not deluding or saying this is a mess. Oh, there's so many different vantage points, it's hard to satisfy. Uh, I think Columbus Day, for the sake of who Columbus was, what Columbus did, uh, for this country, uh, is a great idea as a holiday, uh, not for the sake of just having a day off in the middle of October. Um, one of the concerns that I would have is the extension of the school year, uh, because there have been so many parents over the years who've come to us and said that they would appreciate shortening the school year wherever possible. I don't know how you made the decision, Paul, um, but I think that all of these considerations somehow have to play a balance. Further personally, I agree with Jackie, uh, having had, uh, students, children who probably thirty-five, thirty-four years have experience in the district, uh, the one time that is helpful to have a few extra days, if there are going to be a few extra days, using that February break. I've heard over the years from people, uh, in friendly, uh, that, that that is a time when people, when students, future flight, and tire... Are you, has, are you going to be speaking with the MTA, with people about this? Or, or do they have anything to do about, like, the new school year, or...
Well, there are people representing our parents in the audience, and there are people representing the MTA in our audience. The board can certainly reach out and ask for their impressions at this time. I prefer not to bring this calendar back and forth for the next several months to the board.
I'm good with whatever you decide. I just have not heard so many things over the years. I think the idea of adding Columbus Day to break that.
I have an additional comment. If really the only practical way to insert Columbus Day back in is the length of the school year, then we would be... I think the community would prefer getting out the previous.
Karen, I agree with Carmella on this. I believe keeping the calendar as it was proposed is a better way.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree. I'm starting now by saying it's a bare-bones calendar, doesn't celebrate any holidays, so when kids get out very early, I will have a very different opinion for the fifteen, sixteen calendar. But if that's what the board, uh, is to leave alone, you guys okay with that? Not really.
I mean, another thought to the issue would be is that if you do have to, the Memorial Day weekend, you set a prom for around that same time, so you don't run into issues of, you know, being discouraged. How they normally be for prom for that whole week, that whole weekend, you could run it in that, so it's reasonable.
I don't know any more of this.
No, I agree with you. We have a week in April, so I think you can put that.
All right, I'm sent, with all due respect to John and Frank, I think that probably the consensus of the board at this time is to leave alone what you can count on. I think that, like, you know, I mentioned, they could get out really early that year, and that definitely made insertion of holidays. We don't celebrate, um, Martin Luther King Day that year either, so there's a lot of holidays that weren't considered for the fourteen, fifteen calendar.
Okay.
That's...
So with that consensus, let's move ahead to the fifteen, sixteen?
So I said it last week, last board meeting, I'll say it again. I think there are lots of opportunities in this calendar to insert Columbus Day, and I think we should. Um, so that's my opinion. And if it requires having us go one more day of school at the end of the year, so be it.
So now this, what day is Columbus Day in two thousand fifteen, sixteen?
It's in October.
Columbus Day would be... It would be the twelfth.
It would actually be the real Columbus Day, October twelfth.
Okay, and that would mean moving the school year one day back, one day, is that correct?
Well, there's a couple of options. You could move the school year one day back, and so graduation would be on Wednesday, be twenty-second, instead of Tuesday, the twenty-first. Or we did put in a longer, uh, February weekend. If you look at the calendar, we have the twentieth off, as well as President's Day, the twenty-second in February. You could exchange that for Columbus Day. There's nothing religious or celebratory tied to February nineteen. So those are two possible ways to, uh, to accomplish that.
No.
Have any others?
I mean, it's, it's, certainly there's no religiosity or celebratory to President's Day, but it is an American holiday, and so...
No, not President's Day, Karen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Friday before President's Day.
Right, the twenty, the nineteenth and the twenty-second.
I'm all for President's Day, I want that on the record.
Just checking.
I have a question. Do we know why the tendency or the desire as a general proposition has been, I'm just curious, to have graduation not fall on a Monday or a Friday?
I, let me think about that. I might know the answer. Um, I think Friday, perhaps, just because of the evening, the weekend connection.
It's also religious observance.
Thank you.
The graduation.
Well, this, in the Jewish religion, the Sabbath begins Friday evening into Saturday.
Um, I just, I, I don't want to get anybody in the other day. But I'm just curious why we need it. I mean, it's so nice to see a whole month without a day off. Like, I'm looking at October, and I'm like, wow, there's going to be a whole month with an opportunity to teach our children. You look at September, it's a disaster. You look at November, it's a disaster. December, January, February, March, April, every month has days off. I don't know why you want to, like, why can't you just leave October?
Before we can celebrate Columbus Day another day, but I don't know if that would be a good idea.
Especially because it's actually October twelfth this year.
Jackie, this calendar, fifteen, sixteen calendar, really has a lot of room to negotiate an additional day.
Okay. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm...
We can even take that, uh, that February fifteenth, we don't have it next year, so we have it the year after.
Because it's important.
Why is it important?
What's important? You have the day in February.
It's important to have Columbus Day, of course.
I don't see your...
Everybody has their own ideas, so...
Well, there are two pretty easy options, right? You could extend the school year by a day without doing very much damage, so to speak, to the calendar, or you could give up February nineteenth without doing much damage to the calendar. Either way, it works pretty similarly.
You're saying it's important in fifteen, but it's not important in, right, that's my point.
What?
We're saying that day is important.
Right, but in fourteen, fifteen, there are no holidays. I mean, there's President's Day, but there's, beyond that, there really aren't.
No, I'm saying that that Friday before, the nineteenth is important in two thousand sixteen, but it's not important in two thousand fifteen.
It's important to me. And both calendars, it's always been important to me. Every time we have this calendar discussion, and everybody out there can vouch for it.
If the board is interested, let me, let me try to move us along. If the board is interested in the Columbus Day holiday, if the board has a consensus that we do want to take that day, when we have the room to, then I will, if it's okay with the board to continue the conversation, I'll bring you a recommendation about whether I'll extend the year or take on that Friday.
That's...
Have the asking vote up there.
That sounds true.
Tom?
Yeah, I'm for Columbus Day, twenty fifteen. Just the one.
You're the one we're talking about?
Yes.
So do we have a consensus from the board to, to take on Columbus Day?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And our good news in progress, as always, will be, is online for individuals who want to stay.
Uh, business industry report? Um, any support?
Actually, at this point, we seem to be settling into a little better pattern with transportation, so there seems to be far less incidents and complaints. And we're going to work over the next few weeks to see if we can tweak the routes that try to shorten the form.
Any questions for Barbara?
Barbara, I'm sorry, I have one question. So the additional help in the morning, and that's been working, yes, I have, so we're...
Okay, are there any committee reports? Uh, Charlie's not here. CIT, I don't think they met. CIT policy implications. CIT, we met last week. I'll have a report at next meeting once the... Thank you. Uh, any delegate liaison reports? We're coming down to convention. Some of us are going to convention tomorrow. Charlie already left. PTC liaisons, I have one from Cedar Hill. They, I unfortunately asked them early, but I did give the group a report on our goals for this year, and we talked a little bit about the change in early business and time that happens, or... Any others? Okay, I'll open it up to the public for public participation for items on the agenda. No one? Okay, in that case, motion for items, fight for all?
So...
Second.
Frank, a few seconds? Are there any questions on minutes? Any questions on J? K? L? Uh, on L, L nine, for job description, so when, when and where does that get posted?
Casey, would you, um, of course, I was asking where we're going to, where we're going to be posted for job... to be posting the job description for the communications officer?
Well, it is now on our Altrac system, as well as solar, something similar.
Thank you. Any questions on M? No policy, no proposal. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Mazikarot?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Of stain on eye, everything else, yes.
Mr. Nobby?
Yes.
Mr. Kama? Mrs. Richel? Yes. Dr. Fane?
Yes.
Dr. Folina? Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Any judicial reports or comments from the board? Yeah, we'll bring it up to the public again for anything you'd like to speak to.
Hello, Cheryl, may I please bring the relevant? Can you tell us where we stand on the fields for Lazar?
The board has reached out to town to try and work out an arrangement where we would use their fields, perhaps turf their fields, turf some of their fields, in exchange for a lease or a right of work. So, that was our proposal to the town at a subcommittee meeting recently, and we're waiting to hear back from them. Our hope is that we can meet with the town, the rec, and the board to continue to explore that option as a possibility.
Okay, and do we know when the wires are going to go live on Lazar? Do we have a date on that?
The Jim has reached out to PSENG, we got a precise date.
Do we have an estimated date? Are we talking, like, September, or are we talking March?
The last communication we had from PSENG was the summer of 2014. It's possible that dates have moved up, but that's what Jim is trying to confirm.
Okay, so where do we stand if it does get moved up? Because, you know, they're working very hard back there, you know, and I'm sure those wires, they aren't going as quickly as possible as well. But what are our intentions for our baseball and softball here at the high school that would use those fields behind Lazar if those wires go live earlier? Because there won't be field ready, because we're in, we're here at the end of, you know, October, and we saw just fixing our fields, you know, here at the high school, what it took. So, do new fields, what are our intentions for those sports?
Contingency plans?
We don't have a contingency plan at the moment. That's something we'll have to consider as time gets closer, and see what the timing is like with the township, the timing is like with the power company.
Okay. You know, scheduling and all that kind of stuff for these sports as well. So, you know, it is something that affects our agency here at the high school to, you know, it's not always something that you can do last minute to make those arrangements. So, I would, you know, think that there would be known for how long that these wires are done up, and I don't understand why you waited till, like, the last minute, you were getting to kind of come up with a game plan, and nothing to back it up.
Well, I don't think we're waiting till last minute, but on the other hand, there aren't baseball fields around the corner, so to speak. So, finding fields is going to be difficult.
Well, and the other thing, Cheryl, is I do think it's unfair to say we could wait until last minute. Relocating the fields is contingent upon a $1.5 million settlement that we made with PSENG.
How long?
And they are not going to release that money until they're done with their project, or at least they're done powering up those lines. So, there, we can't get the money. If we had an idea in mind last year, and it was a perfect idea, we couldn't have implemented it anyway. I mean, we think we have a perfect idea right now. We, I think we need to work out some details. But we, that money can't be released to us.
So, the money hasn't been released to you, they're just saying it? So, we have a contract?
No, no, they're not just saying it. There's money that PSENG has set aside in an escrow account, upon which we are allowed to draw, and if I'm speaking out of turn, so if you'll let me know, that we're allowed to draw as we move forward. But the lines aren't here yet, so I think our timing is appropriate.
But the lines are back there, don't you think?
There are no lines yet, and when the lines get installed, they won't be energized until either April or summer.
There's no, there's no lines back there?
They're not energized, and so there's no...
Well, that's the difference. You're telling me the lines aren't back there. They are back there, they're not hooked up yet. She understood that.
Well, I did say there, I did say that they, if they, if the lines went up between yesterday and today, I then forgive, then pardon me, because I didn't notice the lines going up behind Lazar today.
The trucks come in every morning, around 8:00.
Right, I don't pass this area every day. But they're not energized, so I think our timing is good. I think we're moving in the right direction. And I...
Okay, so you feel that we'll have fields?
The school administration will work on a contingency plan.
Okay, so the high school's working on that back there, is that correct?
That would be their responsibility, and the administration, we don't run the school.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure I have everything, you know, because I have...
Is that an active thing, or...
Well, I, as I said before, I think it is going to be a challenge, not a possible situation, but a challenge to find full-size playing fields for us to use, should we not have the field behind Lazar and not have a appropriate relationship with the township to move forward. So, we'll certainly be looking at, trying to find what we can do, and that's in that case. And we'll be working that with the high school administration, with our athletic director, and the districts who accommodate that.
So, if we, if the town agrees, which I surely hope they do, because it would be very nice to have the field to Northland, it's planned gone back here, so that would be nice. But we probably wouldn't have those fields ready though, do you think, in the spring?
I would guess we would not, if right.
Okay.
A potential thought for at least a softball field, because it doesn't require a mound. These softball fields, since they are turfed over here, they can be lined with, you know, the temporary paint or the chalk or whatever, and just put a temporary backstop in. Because with softball, it is just a flat surface, possibly put it through a corner, so that this way, at least you have one field available, we can talk to town. I'm asking for that.
I appreciate that.
Okay, and, Rover, is it the boilers aren't working yet in high school, is that true? Is that my normal thing about that?
No, we just had a tour, actually, right before the board meeting.
Okay.
Boilers haven't been fired up yet.
Okay, good. So, just put extra sweatshirt on. And the locker rooms are, you have to put some more money in, but it'll be another two months?
The expected date is end of November, having just toured it. It looks a little doubtful, but that's the anticipated date.
Okay, well, they'll be nice when they're done.
They are.
They definitely need to be done, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? No one wants? Okay, I'll close calls for participation, and motion to adjourn.
Sorry.